But this inclusive approach makes the strategy stronger and ensures real buy-in from across our community. So, these are our core goals. Our first priority is to define what economic development truly means for Spring Lake. That definition must reflect who we are as a community, not just a generic model. We are focused on long-term community wealth building, not just short-term gain. Another key step is identifying the right industries to target. Ones that align with our location, our demographics, and our resources. Finally, we'll use a return on investment framework to evaluate opportunities so we can make smart, sustainable decisions. We will also establish clear expectations for private investment so that any development benefits the community as a whole. We are going to explore incentives and tools like streamline permitting, utility waivers, zoning flexibility, and targeted tax incentives to make Spring Lake more competitive. Over the next ninety days or so, our plan is to finalize the definition of economic development, choose top industries to target, and publish a summary of this strategy. At the same time, we'll launch Building Spring Lake: A Public Engagement Campaign with town halls, surveys, forums, and digital outreach to make sure residents are included in shaping Spring Lake's future. So, our deliverables. At the end of this process, this board and our community will have six clear deliverables. First, an approved definition of what economic development is tailored to Spring Lake. Second, a target industry shortlist of three to five sectors. Third, minimum investment standards in a simple one-page guide. Fourth, incentive strategy recommendations. Fifth, a ninety-day progress report back to this board. And finally, a public engagement calendar and branding plan. These deliverables ensure accountability, transparency, and measurable progress towards real economic growth for Spring Lake. This strategy gives us a clear and practical path forward. It is inclusive of our community, grounded in accountability, and focused on measurable results. The deliverables outlined tonight are designed to keep us on track and ensure that we are building not just growth, but long-term wealth and opportunity for Spring Lake. I welcome your input discussion so that we can go forward together with confidence and humility. Any questions? Comments? I know that was kind of fast, but I know we've got a long agenda and I want to get you guys through this after. All right, if there is no further discussion on that, we move on to our presentation set in B, which is our real update from the usual process.
Excuse me. Apologies. I have someone who's watching. I don't know how to ask this question or make a statement. They're watching online and they said there's no sound.
It's been fixed.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right, so Mendoza Park is undergoing a revitalization. We know that it's been ongoing for about a year and a half. We did get a recent update and others can share that update. One of the updates that is not part of the park system is part of the Appearance Committee who contracted with the local artist here in Spring Lake to paint this mural. So this is what the mural gives the stage that it's at currently. And we have not only the artist who is on the stepladder, but also volunteers and members of the Appearance Committee, Chairwoman Cynthia Will. We also have Patrick, a local business owner here as well, all sitting in the back. Dimitri, won't you please stand in the back, please? This is our little art. This is an educational piece for our children at the park. I think it's, Ms. Will, what is the age range? Is it fifth grade?
Fourth grade is where they learn about the basic symbols, but it's appropriate for all ages.
Yeah, thank you very much. Fourth grade was where we got the basis for the educational piece of this mural. So you're looking at the left side of the mural here. On the right side, we'll see a little picturesque view that's going to be coming from a city view picture. One of their journalists took that picture of the water tower and Hope Bridge. So that'll come together here shortly. But we just wanted to kind of share this update. We didn't share this plan before what the picture was actually going to look like. And so this is the concept, right? And you can see it's just a concept here, but it's coming together beautifully and this is great. We thank our volunteers who have already answered the call. And I think, what is the timeline we expect to be done, Dimitri?
About the end of the month, I figure until twenty-nine.
Yeah, so we're approaching that pretty quickly. Originally, he thought it was going to be about a month. And we know that with weather, there's kind of, you never know what's going to happen. So this is where we are at this stage. Ms. Will, was there anything else we wanted to make sure we shared about this at this point?
No, I think he did also bring this, using this template out there in the field. And then he also had a booklet that he prepared to help him with all the ingredients.
Can you bring that template, please?
Yes.
Can we get to keep this one here?
That's what I'm, uh...
It's actually the field template.
Oh, okay. So Dimitri, can we get a copy of this so we can display it as you come into town so people can see? So for those that don't know, and I'm sure everybody does, this is our fourth mural in the last couple of years. We've had no murals before now. So our fourth one so far. The funding from this has come from the part of the Arts Council, a small part from the Arts Council grant. But the rest of it was leftover funds from our Special Forces mural that's out on Stitchin' Time Building. As you leave Spring Lake, enter Spring Lake. So those are funds that were not town funds. And so we appreciate those volunteers that donated, but this is, like, you guys don't already know what this is. So if you wouldn't mind sharing one that we can display along with the other art pieces. At some point, we'd like to use these as like an auction-donation kind of platform so we can continue to grow the art in town. But I love that this one is for the children, that everybody, a great piece of this are the butterfly wings. You'll be able to, the children, it's designed for their height so they can stand by, you know, with butterfly wings behind them, get a good little picture for Instagram or Facebook. But we wanted to share that important update for the progress of this mural. And we thank our Appearance Committee members. If those members who are here tonight, please stand. We have Terry Mitchell, Cynthia Will, and Patrick Morrison. Now, they work tirelessly to, for grant funding. They're pursuing another grant to bring arts to town. I mean, this is a great, these people work. They're recognizing our residents who upkeep and maintain their property in a way that unifies the town through our Garden of the Month program. And now they've instituted a business of the month to recognize local businesses that keep up their property, that make everything look well. Because the only ones that get our attention are typically the overgrown lots, you know, the overgrown weeds. And so we wanted to make sure that we recognize the ones that are doing a great job. And so if you haven't been a winner, you can be a winner one time. So that day can come for you. Anyway, that's all I have, Mayor, on the park mural. Did anyone here want to share? Marvin Latkin asked for an update on the parks, and he got an update. Let's go ahead and share that if that's appropriate.
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you. That's it.
All right. I'm scared, but...
Thank you, Mayor. I will recognize, and we will, Rob will, Commissioner Palacio says, "Regina's really done a great job with the Presence Committee." So I think we should give her my hand.
Way you all work though.
Thank you.
And anybody who is a citizen, we do have vacancy. So if you feel like, hey, this is something I can get on board with, please step up to the plate. We have the help. Welcome you. We are looking for other input and other people that are willing to, you know, put in that effort, so thank you. And thanks for being here, Dimitri.
Thank you.
You've got to get back to that mural.
All right, now we'll move on to new business agenda item eight A, Resolution 2025-11. Request to add uncommitted, that's not what I was supposed to say. Resolution 2025-11, a resolution to, we're, we're attempting to bid for Regina Drive Sewer Re-Revitalization Project. Uh, Mr. Orton?
Uh, let me find it. I'm sorry. I got it, I got it here. Basically, what's in front of you is that the town of Spring Lake received two grants. One was for five hundred thousand dollars for sewer plant repairs that we are funding through FEMA as opposed to the grant. We got another three hundred thousand dollars again for sewer improvements throughout the town. So the two of those combined are eight hundred thousand dollars. It's key to understand that. Now, all of this eight hundred thousand, or two grants, are being combined to complete a project that's in front of you called the Regina Drive Project. We have received bids on that project twice. And each time, the price has been beyond eight hundred thousand dollars, which is limited to our grant dollars. So we went back out to bid the second time, and we narrowed the scope and just focused on one area instead of two areas. And what's in front of you is the acceptance or recommendation for the award to S K C of Seabrook with an amount of five seven three nine hundred and twenty-five, that's five hundred seventy-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-five. Now, for the record, that doesn't spend all eight hundred thousand. So we are going to try to make some incremental adjustments when we're already deployed, when we're already out there in the area. And so if I can go ahead and replace another, just think of it this way, another thousand feet of sewer line and I'm already in the area before we dig holes, I'm going to go ahead and do it in that area. So that's what's in front of you, even though it's an eight hundred thousand dollar grant. And a five hundred seventy-three thousand dollar award, we will be trying to spend all of those dollars in terms of improvements in our sources.
Great news. Mayor Orton?
Oh, I have a question. Is this bid any way subject to change orders?
They all are. Yes, they all. And so that's how we will actually add on to some of these things, change orders. And so, you know, to think of it as a pipe averaging, you know, there's a logical terminus to where that pipe ends. So if you can go just a little bit more, we'll do a change order, you know, a little bit more, the update of pipe on there.
Those are change orders from us. What is it, susceptible to change orders from the one bid from S K C?
If they find some things, yes. One difficult thing might be super soys. The bigger they have to have different stains, the worse. So you guys can change orders there.
Do you remember how much a one cent?
Oh, eight hundred thousand, I swapped it. I don't know what the, we got to leave it in the back.
In the other discussion, it's been honored to take a motion to approve or deny Resolution 2025-11. Mayor Orton? Commissioner Latkin? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. New business treaty, Resolution 2025-09, a resolution to participate in the North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Assets Security System. Is there open here?
Good evening. This resolution allows us to participate in another investment pool very similar to the North Carolina Capital Management Trust where most of our money is invested. This works the same way. It's liquid. In other words, if we invest money in this particular investment pool, we can get it back the next day if we need it. The reason we're asking you to do this is it pays a slightly better interest rate than the Capital Management Trust. And I don't mean it always will, but their interest rate over the last year has been anywhere from four to five percent or about, you know, so that's pretty similar to what we're getting at Cash Management Trust. This is a new investment pool that was only started about three years ago. One of the persons that initiated this was Mr. Drew Holland, the Finance Director at Hope Mills. He and four other finance directors from around the state got this fund started. Right now, they have over sixty-two cities participating. They have several counties participating. Raleigh, Charlotte, Greensboro, Wilmington, Asheville, a lot of the major cities. And they're participating because they are paying good interest rate. Uh that doesn't mean we're gonna move our money from Cash Management Trust, they did good to us. But in our budget, uh this year, we have set aside money to start a capital reserve fund to replace equipment and vehicles in the future, uh and to build up money to possibly purchase a fire truck in the future. I think we could use this uh investment pool to put our money in that capital reserve fund to get it started. So we're asking that you approve the resolution so that we can participate in this fund.
You're diversifying, are you? I love it. Mr. Roy.
I wanna make sure that uh to be stressed is that when we talk about diversifying our investment pool, that we're limited to how much diversifying we can do, you know, so we have to put our money in things that are considered relatively safe. Investment vehicles, we can't go for, um you may be realizing the rate of return, ten percent or more than four percent. That is what we're talking about, and so four or five percent is a high watermark for us. And so it's because we have to invest in in our cash in safe vehicles.
What's the, did you know what what our interest rate is with um capital?
Uh both, a lot of last year, it was five percent. Interest rates have dropped recently, but we're still earning better than four percent now. Uh three years ago, we were earning about ten-four percent.
And this this is what we talk about when we're talking about our uh fund balance in that. If this this shows up in your, as a revenue, as interest income. And so when you draw down your fund balance too much, you're basically cutting off your interest income. So you're hurting yourself on both sides of the equation. So this is a good uh good policy to follow in terms of making some various strategic investments that are going to increase. It also means some return in our capital investment.
Is there, uh, pusher, questions?
Yeah, so you mentioned three years ago, uh rates were lower and our balance was lower.
Much worse.
So what is your most recent uh understanding of what we've incurred so far in interest earnings?
Uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we made six hundred twenty thousand dollars in interest incomes.
Say that number again.
Six hundred twenty thousand.
Six hundred.
In January. About fifty thousand, uh over, over fifty thousand a month. And last the, uh for July, we got right at fifty thousand for the month of July.
So we're averaging how much in that bank account?
Uh, oh, that's our amount, uh anywhere between thirteen or fourteen million. Is what we have in Capital Management Trust right now. Uh and we had fourteen million five hundred at June thirtieth, uh right now it's thirteen million five. The reason for that is uh during this time of year, we have very little or no property tax coming in because everybody's paying last year's bill and they just nailed out this year's bill and those aren't due until the fall or Christmas, so we don't collect a lot of property tax now. But at the beginning of the year, you gotta pay your insurances, your dues, a lot of uh expenses are incurred at the beginning of the year. So it is decreased a million dollars in the last uh month and a half, but that's typical. It'll go back up, it'll go back up in the fall when people start paying their property taxes.
Pusher, Commissioner Latkin?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh of that thirteen million, what percentage is restricted?
Most of it.
Almost of it?
Yes, maybe. Because the unrestricted is probably less than one million. Uh and of that, only about five billion is in the general fund. You've got uh a million two that's restricted for power bill, you've got a hundred thirty-one thousand restricted for USDA debt service, another two hundred and twenty, forty-six thousand that's restricted for debt service on the fire station. And then you have uh an amount equal to your account receivable that's restricted by state statute. You cannot spend money you have not collected yet, so you have to limit that. When you take that five billion, you subtract all them that reaches about a million, that or something that's unrestricted. The rest of the money is in the other funds, there is the water fund, the sanitation fund, the stormwater fund, and uh some of our grant funds, okay, and they're restricted to these various capital projects that the grants are for.
Any other questions, any more? Alright, now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny Resolution 2025-09. Mayor Proton?
So.
Commissioner Placio, second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Alright, agenda item eighteen. Uh eight, uh see. Ordinance 2025-03, ordinance to amend the town of Spring Lake Code of Ordinance, Chapter sixteen, Environment Article two, nuisances to date terminology and revise penalties and fees. Mr. Roy.
I'll make this very, very simple, we changed all of the divisioners. And we've increased the fee from uh penalty from under to above.
That's it.
That's all it is exactly.
Any questions or comments from the board? Pusher, Latkin.
Thanks, Mayor. Um and really for the residents out there, the increase in in the price, it's to get compliance. It's not the bringing the monies in, it's so that the neighbor next to you is not that hungry bird. It it's so that those yards and things are kept coming, kept coming today. So this is incentive for for the town to ensure that those residents that are not owning their yards are taking that initiative when they see that bill coming in to make the yard. So, thank you, Mayor.
Should I put it here, or do?
Um, Mr. Roy, would you uh let everyone know where this money goes to for the school system?
To the school system. They don't, they don't create charge for their operations.
Alright, so I'll now entertain a motion to approve or deny um ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-four. I'm gonna go first, Commissioner Chapman.
So.
Commissioner Latkin.
Second.
Is there any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we'll now move on to A D, ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-five, and ordinance to amend the town of Spring Lake Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty-two, zoning to update terminology and revise penalty fees.
Mayor, you missed number four.
Did I miss four?
Yes, you actually, when in her motion, um you asked uh for approval to um approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four, let's just say twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash three. Now three ordinances were adopted here.
Okay, so which one did I just miss, number?
So, um you need to uh.
Reset, oh four?
No, you need to reset oh three, and then go to oh four.
Okay, so now, we have a motion to approve or deny ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-three, in ordinance to amend the town of Spring Lake's Code of Ordinance, Chapter sixteen, Environment Article two, nuisances to update terminology and revise penalty fees. Commissioner Chapman?
So.
Commissioner Latkin?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, sorry about this, y'all, don't get it right. Now, ordinance twenty-five-oh-five, or twenty twenty-five-oh-four, in ordinance to amend the town of Spring Lake's Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty, Utilities Article three, water and sewer, to update terminology and to revise the account balance threshold for disconnection. Mr. Roy.
Um let me, let me read, basically, Article three, water, sewer, again, lowers the account balance threshold for disconnection under Section forty, dash two sixteen, from thirty dollars to twelve fifty. And that makes terminology, our replacing all references to all of the other provisions. Um so you're still subject to disconnection if you have the account balance uh less than, or greater than twelve fifty. Alright, can I say that?
Right, if you're greater than twelve fifty. Twelve fifty, yeah.
That's fair.
Well now we entertain a motion to approve or deny ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-four. Commissioner Thompson?
So.
Mayor Proton?
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Placios?
Okay, yeah, I just had a question about um why that dollar amount?
Why twelve fifty?
Why thirty dollars to twelve fifty?
Uh it's to increase the efficiency and try to reduce the number of people that we can get through. But other than that, that's all I know. Um it's, I, you know, leave it at thirty, put it at twenty, put it at twelve fifty, I don't know any rational reason um for twelve fifty other than the fact that that's what our account balance is working on.
Our account balances?
Yeah, in terms of, you know, at thirty dollars and how do you take, pay that, our minimum fee, tell me, help me out here, our minimum monthly fee is uh water or sewer.
Thirty-sixty-four, I think, and water and sewer is eighteen or something.
So just not even having any uses whatsoever that fee going in.
It's about thirty dollars total.
So if somebody doesn't use their water, that they're connected, they're gonna automatically get a flat fee.
Yes.
And so two months of that, you're saying, puts them at the point where we eventually disconnected.
One month of that.
Doesn't that? With water and sewer fees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So after one month of, I don't get the point.
Are you asking another question?
No, I just don't get it, I don't get the reason we're changing it. Uh I mean, it's just a small dollar amount that we're talking about and whether you're one month or. If you just don't use the water, we're disconnecting it, I don't get it. Why are we changing it?
If we don't use the water, you still have a fee.
Right.
If there's no uses involved and that total is eighteen and ten.
About, right, over thirty dollars.
But we're saying that if you don't pay one month and you're disconnected and you go out of town and you don't even use the water, we're now disconnected?
You're subject to disconnected, if you have a balance later than that.
Okay, so when we're talking about subjects, are we sending out extra notices to people who are subject to disconnection? Or we just, you don't pay a bill, you get disconnected?
We're trying to actually call and do different things before that happens.
So now we're calling people who are one month out of town, flat fee at, oh, owe fifteen dollars. So that's extra manpower, using to call people now, I don't get it.
Leave it, leave it at thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, I didn't have nothing.
Commissioner Chapman?
I was with uh slow, because I didn't quite understand either. And so I'm just trying to make sense of it myself, to be honest with you.
Is there any other discussion? Mayor Proton?
So, I I might be wrong, but the way I read it was, uh sometimes people read, they don't turn it off and then they keep getting charged and then they come to us, uh because we kept charging them. So we're just cutting off at this point, we're not losing any money, that's the way I read it, did I read it wrong?
Mr. Roy?
No, I I don't think that there's anything wrong with with that interpretation of it either.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the way I read it when I was saying.
At at the end of the day, um we're dealing with folks who don't, just just don't pay the minimum and didn't say that they should be credited for that, um and then it adds up and so, no, you can't disconnect it now. Why, you need to waive the disconnection fee. Um I can't, I can't explain it, I can't unexplain why people don't do what they're supposed to do. Um it it's simple, just, so leave it at thirty, it just, I can't explain it.
Mr. Roy, we have, um, there's like some three odd, three hundred or plus more regular disconnects a month. Is that what I heard Ms. uh Ms. Renee say?
Yes, sir. Um in fact, we had almost four hundred a few months ago. Um the list since we increased the uh thing for reconnect from twenty-five to fifty dollars, that has come down. I think last month, we we didn't have quite, we had over two hundred, but not quite three hundred. So it has come down the last couple of months. But the last five years, our bad debts, people that that leave town without paying their final bill was averaging a hundred thousand a year, okay? This past year, because of the change, we cut that to only forty-four thousand. That's still too much, but that's a vast improvement. The other thing we did is we increased the deposit on new customers from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars. Because your minimum bill is about thirty dollars for water and sewer, okay? Your bill, if you use four or five thousand gallons a month, which is what an average family of four would use, is a little over a hundred dollars. And when they leave town, don't pay their bill, you've got last month's bill, plus you have this month's bill, that's two months' bills. So that'd be at least two hundred dollars that you would lose, that is why we increased the deposit. This is all in effort so that the people that are actually using the water are paying for it and the other citizens that pay their bill on time are not paying for those citizens that leave town without paying their bill.
I hope that helped to get with the explanation, we also have to remember that um our water is, that that's a business. It has to operate like a business and when bills are being paid, we have to have teeth attached to our penalties in order to get people to keep this business running. So just keep, keep that in mind, this is a a separate fund, it's it's almost a separate entity. It runs as a standalone business and so the same way you would do these things with your own business, that's exactly what the town is doing, is increasing fees in order to reduce um the amount of people who are not paying their bills long term or a year now without paying. Does this provide a bit more clarity?
So.
Good, Commissioner Chapman?
So does the deposit, um the increase of deposit, isn't that supposed to have offset when they do even one time or?
Yes, ma'am, that is the reason we increase it.
Yeah.
We take your deposit, apply it to your final bill, okay? Then we, if if the deposit's not enough, we bill you the difference. If the deposit is more than your final bill, we refund the difference following off.
But your money?
Thank you, that that doesn't prevent cutoff though, that's, I think that's what.
Yeah.
This is, yes, this is.
They would still cut it off.
Yeah.
Um so I think what you're saying is that they have money on deposit, because they just apply that and then not cut it off, but no, they would still cut.
No, no, I'm talking about in case of them leaving town. And that's, that's, that's what my question was.
Only thirty percent.
I will say that if the one bill's ten dollars and one's eighteen.
That's twenty-eight, yeah.
That's twenty-eight, it's pretty much already at one month anyways.
Right.
Same. That's it.
Thank you. So again, this was just my interpretation, uh we have extremely high number of renters. Seventy percent of our community is rental. So that's a lot of people who just get up, leave and don't, don't tell us to cut it off. And so uh we are stuck with the bill until we cut it off. If we're not told to cut it off, uh then we keep, that that house or that apartment keeps adding up a bill. So if we cut it off at the twelve fifty, which is what I understood, then we're not losing as much. Does that, does that make sense to you?
No.
If they leave, if you leave and you don't tell us to cut your water off, and nobody needs that for three months, what are you gonna do? About three months, alright?
No, we shouldn't be cutting you off if you don't pay it after one month, or worse, you should have two months.
Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna disable this, um and we'll bring this back to the board after we get more details on how this plays out, alright? Alright, so we will move on to uh agenda item eighteen, ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-five, and ordinance to amend the town of Spring Lake's Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty-two, zoning to update terminology and revise penalties and fees. Mr. Roy?
Uh same thing, all of them to commissioners and to penalties is fifty to five hundred. Um there's always some limits associated with this, just because you can do a penalty and this is a misdemeanor, doesn't mean you can go left, so uh keep that in mind that you do need to have these two. Um we have the fifty, fifty number is outdated, but the problem with that is correction, somebody said we should have the three.
Any discussion from the board? Alright, I'll now entertain a motion to approve or deny ordinance twenty twenty-five-oh-five. Commissioner Placios?
Yeah, I have a question on the uh the prior one, the motion was made. The motion was made and seconded. Don't we have to vote to table it? Is that?
You just called for a table. Table isn't hard at all.
Okay. Uh, then I do so move your, uh, statement on this ordinance. Thank you.
Are you approving the motions for the ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five-O-Five? Commissioner Lightman? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, motion carried.
All right, A.F. discussion regarding Lillian Black Elementary. Um, this is for the Spring Lake Board and Mr. Rory, and I will pass to Mr. Rory to start. It's a hundred and some odd page document.
So that's where I will start. There has been a con- conversation, um, about what to do with Lillian Black Elementary School. The, the county has had an appraisal on the property. That appraisal has come in at roughly seven hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, and so there's some movement about, um, the, the building itself and its historical, um, impact to the community, how it's been paid for, um, by the community, and what to do with it. So, um, everybody, and so just, uh, I struggle with this because the, the idea is that what do we want to do with it? What does this board want to do with it? There's been conversations with county commissioners about gifting this to the town. So the county would purchase it, whatever the appraisal value is at fifty-seven eighty, right? And then gift it to the town of Spring Lake. And then it becomes a question of for what purpose. And so, once you accept the gift, you also accept the owner and liability. And so I struggle with it because how do you give up and do different things, um, associated with the building? For example, this building that we're in right now, um, is also one of those nineteen-seventy buildings. Our electrical cost for this building annually is thirty-six thousand dollars. It's got nothing to do with the police annex, it's got nothing to do with fire stations or the public work facility. Just this building is thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, and so that's roughly one half cent on our tax rate, those that just keep the lights on in this building. So if you accept this, um, building that's a hundred years old or whatever in a historical context to be Lillian Black, now all of a sudden you gotta ask the question, how are you gonna keep the lights? Right? You see the, you know, you're not gonna just shutter it and not keep the, the dish and space, those buildings and loads. Um, you're not gonna let the roof leak. You know, we've got a hundred and six lighted properties across, um, Spring Lake, there it is. So what are we gonna do? Um, I believe that everybody would like to be involved with the preservation of a historical building in the town of Spring Lake. The other belief is, okay, how do you pay for it? That's the way I live. This is a decision of the board. We need to indicate to the county commissioners, uh, your desire, your wishes, and what our process would be, and that is a policy decision for the board.
So, um, I, you guys know Lillian Black has been a, a project of mine for the past few years. Finally made some movement on it, uh, on great news, to answer Mr. Rory's question, to begin to answer Mr. Rory's question, that's how do we pay for it? I have been working with the School of Government at UNC Charlotte, um, and they have approved a study, a feasibility study, um, for Lillian Black. We, what happens is their graduate classes take, uh, submissions from all across the state. Uh, while I submitted Lillian Black, uh, for them to review usage, um, price points, um, everything that, that revitalization that goes along with Lillian Black and we were accepted, I just got the email today, um, that we were accepted into this study. Um, they will do a detailed analysis, they'll do market research, they'll create a financial model, uh, for payment and, and, uh, online payment for Lillian Black. This will begin, uh, next month. Uh, and so I will be meeting with, uh, the director of this program, uh, in just a few days, and I'll come back in two weeks and I'll give you some more updates. But again, we have been accepted, and so they're going to take on all of the things that our staff would normally have to take on to find out about how we use Lillian Black, um, the reasons for the graduate studies. Uh, so we will have in just a few weeks, uh, some steps on how we plan to pay for, um, and they'll give us multiple financial models, um, they even have a rental structure built in, um, for that project as well. And so I, I look forward to bringing this presentation back to the community. I would like to hold, um, some townhouse, town halls for the community to come in and express how you want to see Lillian Black, uh, repurposed. Um, and it's, it's going to be around at a forum where we can just brainstorm and talk about, um, how we preserve this commu-, or this, this historical building in our community. And just know that this, this isn't just for you to kind of talk. We want some people who are interested in serving on a community that's gonna help run this because, I mean, it's going to take online commitment to keep Lillian Black, um, in, in a pristine, um, capacity. And so we're gonna need your help with that. It's not gonna, just, just us doing it isn't enough. We need community involved itself. Um, I look forward to bringing that back to you guys here, here soon. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have an unpopular opinion about this building. I went to Manchester Elementary, and, uh, I have no connection to Lillian Black. I'm okay with the county doing whatever they want with the building. I don't consider it to be, I know it's old, it's one of the oldest buildings in town, but I don't think it's a responsibility that the town needs to incur. Uh, I, I don't see how we can afford to take on another building. It's hard. I mean, we just replaced all the AC in this building, and I can't imagine doing that for that building. There's a reason that the school shut down, because the county couldn't afford to eighteen the building. And my opinion, and I agree, if we wanna open it up to the community to voice their opinion on what they wanna do with this building, but there's a high cost associated with anything we continue to do with that building. You can keep the lights on, and so I'm okay with it going private. If the county wants to figure out what they wanna do privately, that's kinda where I stand with it. I have no connection to this building. Um, Bill Eagles, Manchester Eagles.
Don't pull your hair out.
I'm trying.
Okay. Back to, you know, our residents out here have, have talked about taxes. And the last thing that we wanna do is raise your taxes or increase your taxes for this historic building. Uh, we need to come up with some sort of direction to build. And I'm okay if that means private, but for the town to absorb that, that building and the cost of whatever the maintenance would be to make it whatever it would be, is too much of a cost that I am willing to accept as a resident. Or am I willing to want to pass that along to you all? So I'm in favor of, of the study. I'm in favor of, of figuring out what's to be done with that building, uh, when you're dealing with a historic building, often signs your handcuffs to what you can do with that. And so that creates a dilemma for me as a commissioner, but also me as a resident here in the town of Spring Lake. We want so much better, and ideas plus actions equal results. And so with that, we need to figure out what those ideas are, so that that action can result in positive results for you.
Mayor President?
Yes? I, I would like to see, uh, the results of this study, and you have connections. I didn't go to Manchester, I went to Hopeville, thank you. Before this Manchester.
You're Hopeville.
I went to Spring Lake Junior High with my family, the Lucas's, the Joneses, the Murphy's. All of them went to Lillian Black, so I have been, um, I do wanna see how we can not necessarily take control of it, maybe even have it leased to us for a small amount of money, but I do wanna see what they've come up with and what will be. So again, I just wanna reiterate that this is just a feasibility study. The town has not obligated itself to take on any financial responsibility. It is still in full and total ownership of the county. We are just exploring options to keep a pillar in our community, as a pillar in our community. If the study shows that we can financially take on this responsibility or if there isn't funding available, so that the, the funding is subsidized through federal or state county funding, because, because of the age of the building, there is tons of resources that will preserve a almost one-hundred-year-old school building. Um, I know you may not have personal connections to it, but I can guarantee there's several people in this audience that do. Um, if you were at, when they were about to close Lillian Black and to see those families who were torn apart at this school was closing, to hear the stories, to hear the stories that Patrick had even found out about the connections to Lillian Black. Spring Lake is a very young community, and so if we start to get rid of our historical monuments or not preserve our historical monuments now, as soon as I can say it, going forward, that is literally the second oldest building in Spring Lake. And so I think we would be good at this service to our community, to the residents, to the students, the faculty of that school, if we don't even look to the options of possibly preserving the school. Sure, what's your opinion?
So the feasibility study, did you give any kind of timeframe on that?
Um.
I may have not counted that.
Right, I mean, with the, the, so the, the class is starting now, so this project is gonna move, uh, rather swiftly. So once we were selected, um, the school, the school year's already started, so I, as I said, I'll be in contact with our direct liaison, uh, within the next couple of days, and we'll back out the timeline that I presented that.
And then is there a timeline that the county is looking forward to do something with this building?
We have not heard anything back. Do you?
Probably that they need some direction.
So.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Also, we will move on to our reports. And I have a few, so please bear with me. And we will give, begin with the much anticipated, uh, Minosa Park, um, upgrades. We were, Mr. Lightman reached out to our county commission, um, reg-, uh, regarding the updates from or for our Minosa Park, and I hope the response is the remaining side will be put down tomorrow, eight to twenty-six. Uh, I didn't see them out there putting down side. New dugouts, uh, tards on both fields will be put up tomorrow as well. Once the remaining side is completed tomorrow, and this is for Vegas, the playground will be open to the public at that time. So tomorrow, we are expected, uh, for the playground to be reopened at Minosa Park. Other small cleanup items will be completed next week. So if you have been driven by here to see Minosa Park, it's absolutely gorgeous, in addition to that mural, trust me. So, uh, we do have a new Cumberland County Sheriff. Uh, we highly encourage you to, uh, look into Sheriff Morgan, um, and learn more about what's happening with our county and our county police department. Um, we received a proclamation from Fort Bragg honoring us as good stewards and neighbors for serving our veteran and active duty population. So I was invited out to a big ceremony, uh, this past weekend, where we received a absolutely gorgeous proclamation, which I will have on this flag somewhere in this boardroom, so we can decorate these, um, agreeable gray ones.
I agree with him.
So this Thursday, uh, myself, Mayor Protim, um, our new Cumberland County Schools Superintendent, as well as the principals of Manchester Elementary, Spring Lake Middle, and W. Brown, and Dr. Hill, our school board district rep, we will all be doing a tour of the schools. This is an, uh, an effort to, um, get some real eyes on our school in order to get some updates happening. Um, if you guys know, Manchester still has Minosa Middle, and this is something that, um, I know, uh, multiple members on this board have been stressing to, uh, Cumberland County Schools, that needs to be addressed. And then on the playground, Manchester, Spring Lake Middle's track is destroyed. I mean, there's so many things that are happening in our schools, and so, um, I decided to use the power of this dance to reach out, bring these, uh, leaders together, and put some real eyes on our school because we commit change, um, and accountability for the standards that are, are being allowed to happen in our schools. Uh, and so that'll be happening this Thursday, and I will, you know, work back with, um, what came from that. Um, we got, I got a chance to do some fun stuff this weekend. Um, the Man- Manchester and Spring Lake Middle had a back-to-school block party. Um, myself and Commissioner Lightman got a chance to go hang out with the students and faculty, uh, from Spring Lake Middle and Manchester. It was a lot of fun. It was piping hot. Uh, the Spring Lake Police Department was there, our Spring Lake Fire Department was there. I wish they would've turned on the hose, because it was burning. But it was fun to go out and dance, um, and spend some time fellowship, fellowshiping with our students before, um, they went back to school. I also got a chance, uh, myself, Commissioner Lightman, uh, Commissioner Chatwick, uh, Commissioner Thompson. We all had a chance to go out to the schools, to our first schools this morning, to, uh, welcome students back in, which was, um, such a joy, as they, it literally took my whole day to a different level. I had like seven hundred students, random students, who were like, oh, they're so beautiful. Um, so lunch with the mayor is this Friday. We originally put it out as Thursday, but we changed it to Friday, uh, the twenty-ninth at noon at Link Company, right down the street, so please come out and eat with us. You don't have to eat, you just come out and fellowship, ask some questions, hang out. First Friday is happening, September fifth, uh, so definitely get your pants and shoes on. Our siglas have, uh, packed the stage with some amazing entertainment, uh, so come out and support. Uh, Labor Day is on September first, and the town will be closed, um, in honor of Labor Day. And make sure you download the app. Um, I hear all of the things that are happening around town, fix this, fix that, uh, potholes here, potholes there. Take a picture of it. This is your way of keeping the town accountable, but it's also making sure that it's on our end, our, and at the proper department, so that it can be addressed. You'll get an instant email notification, uh, once that issue has been addressed, but you also have now a paper trail on a report that you may have filed. It may have somehow sent through the cracks, but help us, help you by downloading our county's Spring Lake app. It's available on Apple and Android, and that is all I have.
Mayor President?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the only thing I have, uh, I did attend, um, a board directors meeting with, you know, Carolina, my director municipal officials, where I was appointed to the board directors, um, Julia and Robin Brennan. Uh, and also I wanted to remind everybody to check your voter registration, because, uh, there, some people are not updating them, or they're being kicked out. Um, I, I, I know what's happened. I had somebody who's, uh, racist and committed change. Uh, so, uh, please check your voter registration. And lastly, for those who don't know, our mayor's birthday was yesterday. How we're at. That's all the sure I have to birthday.
We're not, right?
That's it.
Mr. Thompson?
I have no updates.
Mr. Lightman?
Yes, Mayor. Usually when I wear my rose shirt. I, I like to give out roses. Roses are a risky share, because yesterday was your birthday. I thought it was fitting, I'm gonna use some of Jimmy's.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Julia. Happy birthday to you.
Skip this line of the room.
The Lord bless I keep you. The Lord bless I keep you another year too. Thank you so much.
All right, Mayor, I'll be back to my work. So where has the summer gone? School's started back up, it was good to be out there welcoming the students back to school. Some look excited, some look terrified, some parents also look terrified as well. Everyone, please be mindful of the buses, please be mindful of the school kids that are out there catching the buses, run into the buses. So please be mindful, slow down, get off the phones, protect our people, keep them safe while they're out there. And next one was kind of with them when he was still here, but ideas plus action equal results. That's my new catchphrase, ideas plus action equal results. The mural at Mendoza is beautiful, it's stunning, I love it. Mendoza Park has undergone a transformation. I've been born in Michael Gibson's side, but it's for you, the residents, it's for our kids to have such a beautiful park out there. And I'm going to kind of tag along with the mayor here. The total upgrades to this park has been the facilities, the bathrooms, the playgrounds, the parking lots, the shelters, the drains, the fencing, the baseball fields, the improvements with grading the sod, the irrigation, it's all been a major part for Mendoza Park, our flagship park. I want to thank Commissioner Patel, he was instrumental in kind of driving this home to get this done, so one of our county commissioners. It was very important in pushing this through so that on Wednesday, the mayor said Tuesday, but I'm going to give them till Tuesday to finish the project, and Wednesday, send your kids out there to the park and let them play until their hearts are content. Welcome them back, take pictures, send those to them, I would love to have that outfit. This has been a project two years in the making, so it has been huge, it's been undertaking, but it is at the finish line. What did Mr. Rory say? The best project is a completed project?
Best project.
All right. So thank you to Michael Gibson, thank you to Commissioner Patel, thank you to the board, thank you to everyone set apart in that. Moving on to our Military Veterans Affairs Committee, we're meeting tomorrow night right here in this room. If you would like to be a part, if you would like to come out and participate, if you've got ideas, bring those ideas so that we can implement those into action. And if it results, it's what we're driving for, it's what we're looking for. So we've got the, on September thirteenth, we've got a suicide awareness poker block that's going to take place. It's going to start out at DFW forty-five, forty-two, and it's going to go to Hone County, Cumberland County, stopping off at DFWs and Superior Legion, and ending back at L. Legion post two thirty, here in Spring Lake. So it's, everyone is welcome, you don't have to ride, you can drop the vehicle if you want, they may chastise you a little bit, of course. Come on out and support that. The money from this is going to go to support the American Foundation for Suicide Awareness. Twenty-three days each way, so let's do something about that. I've asked many times for people to come out and just join, sit, watch, listen, participate in the meeting. If you'd like to be a member of it, you know, we've got the applications that you can fill out for. So great thing to be a part of our rising Military Veterans Affairs population that we've got. Mayor, this year, we're going to honor our Veteran of the Year. We've announced three of us so far. We are looking for the two thousand twenty-five Veteran of the Year. You have until September nineteenth to turn in the nomination form of a veteran that you feel is worthy to be the next one, to be the next Charlie Miller, the next George Reed, the next Jennifer Alexander, the next one who will be, that's up to you to decide. So September nineteenth, Friday, is when those nominations are in, on that next meeting, Military Veterans Affairs, they'll go through those nominations and determine who will be representing Spring Lake as the Military Veterans Affairs, the Veteran of the Year for two thousand twenty-five. And that will be announced at our Veterans Day event, which will be held Friday, November seventh. If the weather's good, it's Veterans Park. Mr. Rory and the town staff and the veterans and the people who worked hard to get that park, so we want to showcase that, we want to utilize that, we want to make that a focal point of our veterans population that we have. You know, about this time, I always talk about cleanups. Mayor, November will be my last organized cleanup for the town of Spring Lake. For four years, I have worked diligently, almost every first Saturday, each month. So we've had over three hundred and forty-five volunteers come out and help clean up the town of Spring Lake. We have collected over one hundred three thousand pounds of debris from our town. Ideas started with Commissioner Philoselus' son, Levi, wanted to go out and on January seventeen, twenty twenty-two and make an impact in the town. Since then, again, three hundred forty-five volunteers, over one hundred three thousand pounds. Ideas plus actions equal results. Lastly, Labor Day is coming up, everybody have a wonderful Labor Day, enjoy, be safe. Thank you very much.
What's your thoughts?
Thank you. And with our affairs committee, we have a Spring Lake Town Cleanup, which is September twentieth. We do two a year, one big one in the spring and one big one in the fall. September twentieth is this fall's town cleanup, and we're also be advertising all the services we'll be offering that day, including if we're going to be doing the medicine drop-off for outdated expired medicine, and as well as, you know, paper shredding, bulk drop-off, those kind of things. So we'll get that advertising out to everybody. And then I did want to mention Adopt a Street program. So we have an Adopt a Street program, we have five current members, organizations, and people in our community that have adopted streets. Two of them are in here, we have Anita Jeans with Patrick in the back, which is South Second Street, and we have First Baptist Church with Pastor Steve England, which is Main Street. So we appreciate them. Anybody else that wants to adopt a street here in Spring Lake, get with me, I'll be happy to set you up.
What's your thoughts?
I have a couple, I have a couple. But now, first I want to say I was actually excited about being able to go welcome the kids in today, because normally I don't get an opportunity to do that because I'm educating myself, but this year I've taken on a new role which allowed me to go and lead to do this, and it was exciting. Also, I want to remind the children to read twenty minutes a day, it will help strengthen your reading, find a book that you enjoy, and remember, parents, to ask your children questions about the book, this is going to help build their vocabulary, as well as comprehension and fluency. Another thing that I want to let you guys know is that I have been doing, storing time with the commissioner. So I've been going around to different daycares, and I will be coming to the schools to read to the children. It's important that we get them excited about reading, this is how we want to build great scores in the schools, as well as get parents to come and invite other parents to come live in our community because we have great schools. And lastly, we, the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, they're having an interest meeting, it's going to be on Monday, September eighth. This is only offered to our high school students, so most of my high school students are ten pound fours. This is a good opportunity to do community outreach, volunteer, and exhibit leadership skills. So if you're interested, I will be giving this information to you so that if you're interested in this, this is a great opportunity to show your leadership skills.
Mr. Rory?
To say I wasn't prepared for tonight would be an understatement. I anticipated some comments in regards to budget and in regards to the factoring, and even have kind of thought about it and looked at it a little bit, so it comes as no surprise that part of my report is going to be about where we're at. Okay? So forgive me, I'm going to steal the words of another, but I'm starting off by having a, you know, I'm going to ask Jimmy a basic question, do some math for me while you're sitting back there. I want to know between now and next year, someone builds ten billion dollars worth of property, I don't care what it is, what is the town of Spring Lake going to get in tax dollars, just Spring Lake? Hold on to that thought, all right, I'll go back to you. So with this current budget that we're in this year, we have four frozen unfunded police officer positions. Which means that we're only operating with three officers per shift on patrol to cover twenty-four square miles. We have six frozen unfunded firefighters, which means that we only have five firefighters on duty twenty-four, seventy-three, sixty-five. And this is how we're trying to revise services. When, most of you know that when I left, I shared it, I'm kind of proud of it, actually, I did. So in one of my former local governments that I served, had a population of forty thousand, same square miles, about twenty-four square miles, I left them with an unrestricted fund balance equivalent to twenty million dollars. And so that's how they're getting interest income off of that twenty million dollars. It's point, say, what are you trying to accomplish with this type of stuff? And so I'm quite proud of that. But on August twenty-first, after six months of preparation, their fiscal year begins October first, by the way, on August twenty-first, with twenty million dollars in fund balance, they failed to adopt a budget. After six months of preparation, they failed to adopt the budget, because the conversation hinges on what you do with this fund balance to the factory. So forgive me for stealing someone else's words and reading them back, but I think it's kind of appropriate to think about this. Your tax bill is higher than last year, and you think, here we go again, same trash picked up, same roads, same water, same police cars, same cars, same walking trails, same complaints. Everything feels the same except what you pay, and it doesn't add up. But it does, just not in the way we taught people to see it. We've stopped connecting the price of government to the price of everything else. We act like public agencies are immune to inflation and exempt from reality, as if fuel, concrete, salaries, insurance, trucks, chemicals, equipment, steel, asphalt, and labor costs all freeze the moment the budget's adopted. They don't. Government has to buy the same things from the same world at the same rising prices as everyone else. We want the government to run like a business, but no business can charge the same price for the same product forever when the cost of everything goes up. And that's where the real problem lies, not in the tax bill, but in the expectation. We think paying something means we're entitled to everything, we confuse being taxed with being covered. We believe proximity equals entitlement, we want a service fee, and should you see a school is funded, always available, and free at the point of use. We want smoother roads, faster response, better parks. Now, we talked about this tonight? Better parks, stricter enforcement, but we also want your houses, your taxes, your rules, your responsibilities. And when someone explains about the statute, the funding formula, or the reality of the trade-off, we call them dismissive, out of touch, in error. I can't tell you how that comes up. But cities do not run on emotion or illusion, they run on math, they run on cost, they run on limits, they run on what is, not what we wish. You don't have to want to pay for more, that's fair, but you can refuse to fund something, you can still expect to keep it. You can't cut what you depend on and act surprised when you can't deliver. You can't, you can say not this, but you have to be willing to say instead that. That's the goal, that's what every family, every household, every organization already knows, if you say no to cost, you say yes to consequence. And the hardest part about local government today isn't providing the services, it's explaining the reality to people who are accustomed to usually ignoring it. It's pointing to the budget, being held is just an excuse, it's a saying, you don't pay for city services, so you don't get their benefit even if our service is a closer view, being treated like a problem, being honest, and being punished for it. This isn't about wanting more taxes, you can want more, you can want less, that's your right, but either way, you have to live inside the math. Cities crumble living between what people demand and what they refuse to accept. And so I've been here just about a year and a half, and our funding reality is, and I briefly tried to summarize it earlier, we have been left woefully unprepared to face our reality. We purchase thirty billion gallons of water a month and bill for fifteen billion of it. Where's the other fifteen billion going? All right? We take in more sewer to treat more sewer than we bill for, roughly about fifty percent of what we treat we actually bill for. That should come as no surprise, because that's related to the water consumption we use to do it. And so I leave it with that thought, in that when we discuss, what do I get for my taxes? What do you pay the county for? The schools, Living Black, social services, okay, EMS, all of these things are county-funded, general fund taxes. What do you pay for, what do you get for your taxes for Spring Lake? Fire Department, Police Department, Administration, Finance, and Streets, get it, how it works, load it up. All the things that come with that are general fund expenses, and that's where your taxes go, and they're detailed line item by line item. So I'm left with that one thought, in that what is our app, what is our reality? And I realize that I'm preaching, but I live this every single day, all right, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So when I ask the question to our finance director, if we had an investment in Spring Lake of ten million dollars overnight, or over the next month, or over the next six months, what would that generate for a Spring Lake in property taxes?
Seventy-four thousand one hundred dollars.
All right. Harold, police chief, do you know the cost for one police officer?
Probably a five benefits and outfit.
A ten million dollar investment will not fund the rehiring of the one of the four frozen unfunded. That's our reality. And I can't sum it up any better than that, in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. I'm trying to make sure we provide the public take, try to make sure that we provide drinking water, and we're trying to protect the environment in terms of our sewer assets, so they're not leaking all over the place and damaging our streams. And finally, we're trying to enhance the quality of life of residents living in Spring Lake. That's what we have, that's my report. I just, I was prepared for it, I just got out of sync.
Thank you for that, that was very informative. And just remember, we are also recovering from a huge financial setback where we had a one point nine million dollar current deficit in our general fund and two hundred and twenty-five dollars in cash reserves. So that's where we were twenty-two months when this administration took office, that's where we began. And where are we now, Mr. Harold Martin?
We, if you don't vote government, I'll probably, oh.
A million unrestricted?
Yeah.
So, again, I hope this information helps, and again, feel free, if you need more clarity, please reach out. The best way to fix these problems is to give you the information and the tools that we have, and the resources that we use. Mr.? Uh, Mr. Porter?
I was going to say something, but I'm so serious, I have it.
Well, that is all for today. Again, enjoy your Labor Day, and this meeting is now adjourned, please get home safely, have a good night.